All right, good morning, everyone. Call order, our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, July 28.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Waymire.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson, Commissioner Dunn.
President.
All right, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. All right, our implication today will be led by Reverend Bob Colrick of the First Christian Church in Audi. Morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Bob Colrick. I'm the interim pastor for the First Christian Church here in this wonderful town. And so would you bow with me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we praise you and we thank you for your goodness and generosity. We thank you, God, for faithfully preserving us through good times and bad times. We pray, God, that we might serve you and our brothers and sisters with all that we have. Today, God, we glorify you in our plans and activities. We speak of you to others in response to your great love for each and every one of us. As we meet today, we pray that our thoughts and our actions, our words and deeds, might reflect your love for each of us and all of creation. We know, God, that we live and breathe and have our life in response to your will. We pray, God, that in all of our actions, thoughts, and words, we might seek what is best for this community in which we live. You, God, are the source of our thoughts, words, and deeds. You grant us endurance and encouragement. May we now, God, live in harmony with each other, and together may we lead our community with wisdom, friendship, and enthusiasm through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody signed up for a general public comment, which this portion is for citizens desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda. Discussion's limited to five minutes. Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business. Public comment isn't permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Who do we have?
Norman Woogie.
All right. Morning.
See, we got an empty chair. I'm Norman Woogie at 37th I. Pawnee Road. I'm here after a long time of absence, missed the commission meetings. There needs to be changes made in this commission. I've tried to make changes before and back quite a few years ago and struggled with. So I just go up to the next level and get things done. The departments need to be examined and see what you need and be evaluated and look at the history of what things were in the past. The taxes are terrible. They go up every year and I hear different excuses, you know, we got a handle on this. And the taxes go up because of spending and borrowing and your little pet dreams. And there are sales taxes in Franklin County that exceed 10%. I just happen to go another town where I get where the taxes are cheaper. 10% is unreal. I remember when my brother says, oh, we're going to have 1% sales tax. It'll stay 1% because as the community grows and everything, it'll never exceed 1%. I'm exploring ways to fight this plague of taxes. Maybe it's possible to go back to the three commissioners. It's very easy to do. It's just a matter of you can make a choice like that or the people. There are many unsatisfied people in the community, and they're tired of the complacency that the commission has. Thank you very much.
All right, considered agenda today would include minutes from the meeting on the 21st and a study session on the 26th. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Waymire.
Yes. First item of business is to consider approving the submission of two applications for the KDOT Local Off-System Bridge Program.
Commissioners, this is something that we do just about every year. KDOT has a bridge program where they will pay 80% of a bridge replacement cost. The program is very, very competitive. We've been fortunate the last several years. We just finished a bridge replacement project on Pawnee Road. And then now we've got one underway in the design phase on Osborne Terrace. So I find it very unlikely that we'll be selected for the 2023 program year, but I would like to go ahead and submit just to keep our name in the hat so that they keep seeing these bridges. And so hopefully in '24 or '25, we're selected again. So I would just like to formally ask your approval to move forward with these two applications.
Glad we're still trying. Any questions, Sir David?
David, these bridges, are they on the top of our bridge replacement needs?
These two bridges have the lowest efficiency rating of any bridges that we have in the county. One's at 25, which is the lowest, and the other one is 28.5. And so, yeah, they're not on the most highly traveled roads and those sorts of things, but they are like the bridge on Texas Road just south of Sand Creek. It's very narrow. It becomes essentially a one-lane bridge. The other one on Virginia, north of Marshall, it's got a very low weight limit on it. And so, you know, I could argue that there may be greater needs on more highly traveled roads, but these have the lowest efficiency rating and therefore probably have the best opportunity to be selected. As we're going through the bridge inspection process right now, CFS should be wrapping up the fieldwork anytime and getting the paperwork submitted. Once I have that report, I may make a different decision next year based on the information that we collect now, but I think these are certainly worthy of being replaced and would like to move forward with these two specifically.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for David? We would like to make a motion to approve the submission of these two applications for the 2023 KDOT Local Off-System Bridge Program.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Waymire.
Yes. Our second item of business is to consider updating the maximum footprint for the expansion of the landfill.
Commissioners, SCS Engineers has gotten underway with the project to re-permit or update the permit for the landfill. One of the considerations that we need to resolve now so that they have good direction going forward is the actual footprint that we want to expand to. We had previously presented, I think, three or four options. And during those meetings, questions arose about maybe looking at the whole site. And so to kick off this project, that needs to be item number one. And so we had SCS look at what would it take to maximize the footprint of the landfill and what would those impacts be? And so that's what they have done. They have, you should have in your packet, a revised footprint that kind of outlines what it could look like. A couple of items of note, the, by maximizing the footprint, we would definitely have to do something with the infrastructure that's on there. That's the scale house, the transfer station building, monitoring wells. This also includes part of the sheriff's gun range. We don't have to communicate exactly where we plan to move these items today as a part of this project, but once we start the decommissioning process for some of these facilities, we would have to potentially update the permit or if we move off-site, we may have to do, go through another permitting process. But I think that those items are, if we go through with this, they are at least a decade down the road, if not longer, before we have to make those decisions. That gives us maximum flexibility to allow this site to develop how it does, how it needs to. I'm certain that there are going to be circumstances that come up in the future that may change how we, how the organization handles the landfill. But this, this process doesn't necessarily pin us into any one decision, any one route, but does give us, and if we were to do this, we're looking at, got to be 100 years or more before we run out of airspace and land at that present facility. It gives us an opportunity to look at acquiring additional land, which is something that we probably need to look at anyway for borrow sites, and gives us plenty of time to work through those questions and issues down the road. It's not something that we have to make the decision today on those items. So my recommendation, and we've confirmed this with KDHE, we don't have to define those. They just want to be notified at certain stages and will be subject to the rules in place at that time. But my recommendation is to move forward with the full maximum footprint and to start that process, you know, immediately.
Good. I like this plan compared to the ones we were looking at earlier. It does give us a lot more options down the road. Questions for David, comments?
And just to add on to that, we will be having a kickoff meeting with KDHE, a formal kickoff meeting. Some of these discussions that SCS has had with KDHE have been, you know, part of other discussions they've had, but we'll have a focus kickoff meeting sometime in the next month with KDHE to work through all these final issues and make sure we get started on the right foot with it. But this is, this is the first key step in that process.
Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the updated maximum footprint for the expansion of the county's construction and demolition landfill?
Make that motion to expand.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Waymire.
Yes. Third item of business is to consider for approval authorizing county staff to begin working on a lease agreement with the Historical Society regarding its use of the Visitors Information Center.
Yeah, so all of you have a cover sheet on your surfaces there that speaks for itself. This isn't the first time we've had this discussion. The discussion involving the Crestview Facility and its condition goes back a couple of years to one of our facilities tours that occurred pre-pandemic. At our most recent facilities tour, which we held earlier this year, it was again brought up that Crestview's just in such poor condition really need to look at other potential options for the Historical Society. Started discussing the Visitors Center. The executive director, Diana Dean, Starsnick Dean, who is here today, has been great to work with through the process. As we started exploring it further, we decided to put a joint committee together. That committee consisted of a couple of county commissioners, Cole Waymire and Rod Harris, as well as a couple Historical Society board members and then staff from both organizations. We toured the Crestview Facility, assessed the condition of it. We also toured the Visitors Center and just talked through how it would work, what it might look like. Now, the boards made it clear that they would still like to offer tourism services out of the Visitors Center. And so what was discussed at the last meeting was moving the county's tourism portion of the operations into the conference room that is located within the Visitors Center. The advantage of that room is that it has its own entry point, so you could put separate signage there. It's really, it's a logical spot to kind of separate tourism from the Historical Society. Our volunteers, who obviously were incredibly appreciative of and grateful for, they didn't like the idea. They were concerned that there wouldn't be enough space. And certainly, I think that those concerns still exist today, but at the end of our last meeting, Casey and I told you we would work with them on finding the best solution and making it work as well as we could. And we have done that. Casey has met with Lucille Spencer, who is kind of the, I guess, the unofficial spokesperson for the volunteers. They've met several times. Brandon Sands has been out there and met as well and taken measurements. Amy Hodo, our assistant, has been out there. We've tried to do as much as we can to help them feel comfortable with this transition. One of the requests that they made was because it's going to be a smaller room to look at potentially bringing in a smaller desk. We printed off several options and asked Lucille to choose which desk she wanted. They've talked about repainting the space. We've got paint swatches and asked them to pick the color that they wanted. I mean, we've, there's still things out in the Visitors Center that were donated that I think some of our volunteers have concerns about. We've told Lucille, you tell us what you would like to go in that conference room. As for the stuff that we don't think can fit, you tell us what you would like to do with that. Where would you, I mean, the county is not looking to assume, you know, necessarily assume ownership of that or determine where it goes. And so we've, we've tried to be as sensitive as we can to all parties involved here, but in the end, there are going to have to be compromises reached. And we feel like Diana and her staff have understood that from the beginning and have been good to work with. And so what I'm looking for from the four of you today is an affirmative vote to allow this move to happen, provided that we, Diana and I, can agree on a lease and what that looks like. I will tell you, from the county perspective, I don't anticipate any issues. The Historical Society has given us a written list of requests. I think they are all incredibly reasonable. I think they can easily be incorporated into one of our leases. I'm very confident that they're not going to have any issues with the language that I would put in because what I'll basically do is use one of our standard leases and just tailor it to that specific situation, but there's nothing punitive in there. I just, I don't think this part of the process is going to be difficult. Once we've done that, that lease will come back in front of you for your, ultimately for your review and approval. But that's really where we're at. I think ongoing discussions are going to be needed about that accessory building, and we'll have those discussions, and certainly the board will be part of that process as well. But this vote today will just give me, I feel like, what I need to go ahead and move this process a step forward. So Diana, is there anything you want to say today or?
Good morning. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to work through this process. It's a scary thing for us to move a giant collection and to also make sure that we can continue to serve our population. But I feel like we have come to a point where I think that it will benefit us. It will benefit the people we serve. It will benefit tourism, and we'll be able to work with them as well. And as Derek mentioned, our only concern now is that, the storage building. But I'm hopeful that we can work through that as well. But I'm, we're actually now just looking at setting a timeline and moving forward so that we can get started. So thank you very much for that opportunity.
Any questions for her while she's up here?
I might have one question. I had, you know, Historical Society meets monthly down there at the Record Center. Do you anticipate an open area at the Visitors Center for the monthly meetings?
The...
Discuss this later.
Well, I will just say that we have grown so much in terms of our participation that location is our biggest challenge. It's pretty typical for us to have 70 to 100 people at a program anymore. So having a space big enough to do programming is the issue. But we're hopeful that if we can survive this pandemic, we can get back to having more in-person programming.
I guess good, maybe move it to the depot.
Yeah, we've packed, we've packed, we do have our monthly board meetings, and anyone can go to those. We still have those, they're on Zoom right now, so, but yeah.
I was just curious because I haven't seen any footprint of the arrangement for the new, the new arrangement for the Visitors Center. I haven't seen a footprint or schematic of it. I just thought I'd ask that question.
Sure, we had the opportunity to visit and do a lot of measuring to figure out where our shelving will go, how we can create workspaces for visitors and staff. And now we're measuring what we have to figure out, what furniture we can continue to use and what we're going to have to buy. So we're still in the process of working that part out.
And this arrangement will give the Historical Society leeway to make that footprint basically whatever they want. I mean, we're just stating we would like to retain the conference room and then, I mean, it's basically the conference room for tourism purposes. What Diana and her board come up with in terms of layout and where they want to put their shelving, I mean, this lease, my intention is to give them full authority to, I mean, obviously structural changes are one thing that would need to be approved, but they'll have great leeway in choosing the plan that they would like and that works best for them.
Like I said, everything's incredibly amicable between the Historical Society folks and us. That's definitely the, since I got whenever, you know, we've met, the real objective of this contract or lease would be just to clarify, you know, in the future what the arrangement is. Too often, we look at things that have been done in the past, and some of it was in writing, some of it's in meeting minutes, some of it's just a handshake agreement or understood. Like this makes it abundantly clear and really eliminates confusion for the future and protects Historical Society and us, and it just...
As a Historical Society, we love paperwork.
Yeah, there you go.
And we love keeping it on file, so we're going to have lots of paperwork out of this so that everyone knows exactly what's expected, I think.
But I'm glad we're going to be going into it with a just written, understood, public, publicly available document, so.
Yeah, I want to thank you for work with Derek and on this lease deal.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Annie, thank you. Any other questions before, before we ask for vote on this? Not the last time we'll discuss it, but I, you know, I think making the decision to, for the move to happen, I think I'd like to get that out of the way today. And then from there, it's not addressing that portion of it again. At that point, it's just working through the procedural details of it, so.
I'm happy to motion that we approve staff working on a lease agreement between the Historical Society.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Waymire.
Yes. All right, that brings us to the end of our items of business. Staff reports, you had Derek.
So I've mentioned this on and off for months, but there is a team of county employees that are working on the countywide software project. This is the project that is ultimately going to bring our software, and I don't want to say technology, but basically our software into the 21st century, something that's long overdue. We've made tremendous progress on that over the last several months. We're to the point now where it is our goal to have an RFP here for your approval on August 11th. And so I anticipate meeting that deadline. And then from there, of course, we'll post it and send it out to vendors that we are inviting to bid on this. The next phase of it, or the phase of it that the board will be involved in is when we start hearing from vendors, we'll start meeting with them. And then we'll, at some point, have a study session where we bring to you what it is that the various vendors are offering, what we think would be best for this organization. And so pleased with where that's at, but the intention is to try and have a vendor selected by the end of the year and be looking at implementation at the beginning of 2022. And so that's been happening in the background. Continue to get more requests every week for stimulus funding. Tell all of these entities the same thing, that we're trying to work through our 2022 budget process right now, but it's our expectation to start having discussions in the fall. And I'm telling folks, I'm making a note of those that have reached out to me, but I'm also telling them when they should reach back out. Good news, as we've said several times, with this particular stimulus package is we have until the end of 2024. So there's no rush on that, but just know there's, there is going to be a lot of competing considerations for those funds. And then finally, and it's inevitable at this point, we're going to start talking about COVID again. CDC just issued updated guidance. My COVID team has, not that we ever disassembled, but we are now meeting on the weekly again. I'm watching our testing trailer. It's busy pretty much every day. We're going backwards. And so Nick, do you want to come and piggyback on that? And then we'll go to Casey.
Good morning. I'm hopeful we're going to be having these conversations again. Currently, right now, in Franklin County, I have 87 positives. Unfortunately, we have had three deaths in July. We're seeing a 13.29% positivity rate. One of the things we're seeing is the nursing homes are starting to go back on shutdown. Talked to Rock Creek last night, they're on shutdown with outbreak testing. Have been in touch with a lot of them and what they're looking at doing. We have seen it go through one other nursing facility. They're getting that under control. Some information for you just so you kind of have an idea where we're at before we jump into vaccines. So far, we have about 10,948 people with one vaccine in the community. We have 9,803 fully vaccinated people in our community. We've seen 27 breakthrough cases, and very few of them have been very sick. A lot of them are very minor symptoms. So if you look at that, we're still looking at a .002% of breakthrough cases for the vaccinated population we have, which is good. At this point, we do have two people admitted in Advent, and I know of two people that are up in the metro area. So four people we know of that are in the hospital. One of the things this is causing, and I just got off a meeting with Advent Health for their service committee meeting for the ER doctors, we're seeing ICU shutdowns throughout the metro area. We're seeing ER shutdowns. We're seeing cath lab shutdowns. We're seeing ER shutdowns, we're seeing cath lab shutdowns. The other day, they had to transport a patient to Wichita for an ICU bed. So, this is starting to affect the hospitals and where we're transporting patients to. A lot of our patients that we usually transported just to Shawnee Mission or Lake that we're seeing going all the way up to St. Luke's North. So, this, this new outbreak that we're seeing of the Delta virus is affecting the hospitals throughout, which is affecting our transport times. So, we're transporting patients that were two hour turnarounds, we're seeing three to four hour turnarounds, I get our patients transferred and have an ambulances out of the community. So, a lot of, a lot of moving parts at this time. Good news is, we are seeing an increase in phone calls for the younger population, the 12 and up wanting Pfizer. So, the health department is switching. We kind of held on to Moderna throughout the summer because Moderna turned in the paperwork to be able to distribute that to the 12 and up. And since we already had quite a bit of that on hand, we kind of held out thinking it was going to happen. Well, that's been a slow process, so we have switched over to Pfizer and the health department and are starting to put together clinics. The Dunkin' Doc, they vaccinated 17 people with Pfizer, three of those adults, the rest were under 18. So, that was good to see that we're, we're seeing that interest. We are going to be working at the Fusion when it comes in for OU, offering vaccines out there. On the 11th, they have a student gathering, Dr. Ransum's going to be presenting to them, hopefully persuading them to get the vaccine. We will have a presence at the Lanes Fair giving vaccines down there. We're reaching out to the schools, we've got plans and I've worked with the tractor show and the car show to be able to offer flu and COVID shots at that. So, we're really trying to combat this because the only way really to beat this is to get people vaccinated. So, that's something that I know Casey and Brenda and that group have been working real hard on is getting vaccines pushed out. Derek said, we are seeing a large increase in the number of tests that we're doing, the number of symptomatic people, so.
What do we figure our vaccination rate for the county is?
What was that?
What do we figure our vaccination rate so far for the county is?
Last time I looked at it, we were right about 40%, 38 to 40%, I think. And if the 9,000, it were 27, so probably in that percentage rate.
I think I asked this before, but I just wanted to know something, Shane, do you get numbers? I know Walmart's doing quite a few. Are you getting those numbers that are going on to state and then back to you and what?
That's been one of the frustrating parts about this whole response, when they were doing testing and then when they went into the vaccines. We get our information from EpiTrax or the state system, but that process is slow. So, we don't know exactly how many Walmart have done, how many Walgreens have done. I know Walgreens was doing a lot for a while and then they started doing their second doses in Gardner. So, a lot of people quit going there to get their vaccine because they didn't want to travel to Gardner to get their second. The Health Partnership clinics have been doing them. I know Wellsville, Auburn has, but we don't get those numbers directly sent to us. We have to go track them down and it's all as good as what they report to us.
Well, and, and that's exactly right. And I'll tell you, Don, don't think we haven't asked. I mean, certainly, we've reached out to the Walmarts, we've reached out to the Walgreens and it's not even that the folks there don't want to share it with us. I think they would, but it's just their corporate offices won't let them and so, we're just kind of stuck.
At least I feel comfortable that, I know they are. I mean, we can always look at that number and hope that it's better, not worse.
Yeah, yeah, and that's exactly right. But no, we, we've spent a lot of time trying to find efficient ways to track that info down, so we feel like we do have a good, accurate number and it's just so hard to do, but.
And, you know, yes, the big thing is, is they are giving those, but we are continuing to see increased phone calls of people interested in the vaccine, even people that in the first phase were completely against the vaccine, we're seeing them now looking at it and asking for it. So, I'm hopeful that we get a good push in the fall, we might be able to see some increased vaccination numbers and hope to cut this. Any questions for me on that?
When you're talking about breakout, Nick, does that mean personally fully vaccinated, then they, for some reason, they want to be tested again for some reason?
Well, that is exactly what it is.
They test positive then?
Yes, it's fully vaccinated people that have some kind of symptoms and get tested. Like I said, the symptoms that we're seeing in fully vaccinated are, are very mild. We haven't seen a lot of major ones. The ones that we did see that had some major issues from it had extreme comorbidity factors that were terminal anyway. So, we're not seeing a lot of it, except for they may come in with a sniffle or something and they get tested for COVID and have it. And we knew at the beginning of this with the vaccine, that you can have the vaccine and you can still carry the COVID virus. That was one of the conversations that was out there is, you may never show symptoms of it, but you can carry it, so.
And you said, what we're seeing right now, the breakthrough rate is .02, 213?
.002%, so it's.
1,000.
Yeah, so it's, it's very low. And, you know, you look at flu vaccines, you look at any vaccine, there is a chance that there's a possibility that people can still get it. The hope is they have enough antibodies to not have major symptoms and that's what we're going for, so.
Well, and we're, I mean, science has taught us that if you've been vaccinated, even if you have a breakthrough case, it's still, which those cases are incredibly rare, but then spreading it, like people who are vaccinated don't, they don't spread it. I mean, we've seen so many households with, you know, when we think back to the church camp that had the outbreak, where the kids get it, but the vaccinated parents don't. And so, and that goes both ways. And so, I think, yeah, I mean, vaccine works and as Nick said, I don't know that there's ever been a vaccine that man has created that has been 100% effective. Like this is nothing new. It's substantially more effective than the seasonal flu vaccine that we give and thousands of people take every year.
So, you got to talk about the mask now stuff?
Talk about what?
The masking or not masking and all that stuff going on now?
That's a discussion that, that we're going to have to have as a COVID team and that's where our frustration is because we had gotten this to a point where, you know, there wasn't mass guidance being given because we, but, but now we're getting back to that. So, we're not prepared to talk about it today, but the CDC's new guidance is back to recommending masks and so, something we're going to have to discuss internally and then we'll come back to the five of you with what our thoughts on that are, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Anything else, Derek? Start going around the room?
I, no, don't believe so. Thanks, Cole.
Casey? Sheriff? All right. David?
You might get Brandon up here.
Oh, Brandon, yeah, all right.
Just a couple of real quick updates. The boiler replacement project that we've got going on right now in the jail, the new boilers are in place, but we're kind of at a standstill. The pumps that they need to install those are kind of on backorder. They're just kind of waiting for them to be produced and shipped out. They ordered them the same day that we signed the contract, so just kind of playing a waiting game right there. The painting for the courthouse is going to start on Monday. Should take, they said, estimated about two weeks to complete. So, they'll be moving that lift in on Monday and getting set up and getting started, so happy to see that project done too.
For sure.
That's all I got.
So, Brandon, here's monitor on the grass, see how they get that big crane in there.
Yeah, I know that we're going to have some, some spots we're going to have to get fixed up. There's a, there's a little bit of damage from when they were here before and we were just kind of waiting for this project to be totally complete before we start filling in those, those low spots and getting grass seed down, so. Yeah, we know there's going to be damage, we're going to have to get fixed up.
Not an effort, is it?
Yeah, that's right.
Not as hard as the ground's going to get right now.
I think so.
All right, thank you, Brandon. Diane, anything you're excited about from the Historical Society, other than your potential move you want to share?
Well, the big one that we're working on coming for September is that we are working on an automotive history of Franklin County to have a new exhibit to have up in September in time for the car show. So, that will be the big thing that we're working on right now. It turns out, we have a lot of pictures and pieces of cars and things that we can put on display, so that will be coming soon.
It'll be popular.
I think so.
All right. David?
So, we finished the project on Utah north of John Brown and we're going to be getting started on Ellis Terrace today. We're going to be building up the road, probably maybe even a couple of feet higher than it is now in this one particular location. Once we get that built up, we'll come back and put a, we've got a crossroad tube that needs to go in there and we're trying to work with the adjacent landowners to help mitigate some of the flooding and washout issues that we have at that location. Today, we'll also be having a crew picking up, cleaning up an illegal dump site up on Nebraska Terrace near the landfill. Folks seem to find that as a popular location to drop off their trash and couches and other things that they, it's up by the, close to I-35 when they overpass through there. So, we'll be doing that. We also finished up the blade patching, the first round of it and we'll be doing some inspection tomorrow on the chip seal route to make sure that there's nothing else that we need to touch up before that project gets started, which I spoke with the contractors this week and they're anticipating the fifth or sixth, so next Thursday or Friday, getting started on that and they'll have roughly 10 days to finish that project. We'll have a kickoff meeting with them early next week to kind of work through the final details on that before they show up and get started. I also visited with KDOT regarding the local road safety plan application that we submitted earlier this year. I hadn't, hadn't heard anything in quite some time. Finally got a response back and they are in negotiations with a consultant on that project and assured me that felt like it would be getting underway here in the next month or so. So, that, that project, you know, we have a, you know, it's, I think our share is like $5,000, KDOT picking up the rest of it, but that will occupy some time coming up. But that will, getting through that project makes us eligible for additional KDOT funds on some other projects that might come in handy for the Old 50 project. Speaking of that project and the site plan on our shop facility, I spent several hours with the survey manager for Bartlett West yesterday. We toured the site, talked about the shop side and talked about particular issues with that and then we also spent some time viewing Old 50 from one end to the other, talking about survey related issues and those sorts of things. I anticipate really getting underway with a scoping meeting with Bartlett West on the Old 50 project here in the next week or so. Darren, who was here, is just getting back from vacation and so we'll be really digging into that in the, in the coming days. I wanted to have a quick discussion on dump fees out at the, out at the landfill related to the conversation that you all had on Monday with Paul, related to the city of Ottawa's demolition program. My question to you is, is really, how do you, how would you like us to proceed with that? I think in light of the discussion we had just a minute ago, certainly it makes sense for us to participate in that and I'm ready to, to move forward if that's a resolution or just a simple, you know, affirmation from the board, however you would like to do that, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward.
I think it'd be good to, let me just work with Paul and maybe see what kind of impact that potentially have on the facility. I can't imagine the grand scheme of the volume that goes on out there, that would be a huge impact revenue wise that we would have otherwise received and then our costs to handle that waste are kind of an in-kind cost. I mean, we're going to employ somebody, we're going to have the equipment anyways right now, obviously have a small impact on the lifespan of the facility and that has a, but that's spread out over 100 years now, so.
Sure.
And there's no doubt that positives would far outweigh that. So, but I'm maybe, to me, just a little kind of.
Yeah, no, and I, and I agree with that. I don't think we can just give a verbal affirmation. I think we have to do our due diligence just so that the taxpayers understand, here's what the potential, you know, value of that program is. And I do think it'll culminate in a resolution passed by the board, but I think just, and Paul's a great liaison, he can work between the city and county just to get a handle on, you know, what kind of volume are we talking about, how many potential houses? It's not something that we've got to get down to a cent, but just, you know, a light analysis of what we're looking at. And then he could do the same in Wellsville and the other communities just so that we have an idea, as you said, Cole, what, yeah, what the demand on the landfill would be. I agree and then I think David does as well. I don't think it's anything that's going to scare us off at all, but I just feel like we've, we've got to have that info.
I think he could do, like you say, some kind of light analysis that show, we know what the history of the program is because it's existed for a while, that's a given, a little bit of math showing what our costs would be. And I think if you analyze it over a five or 10-year period, you'd say that, see that the payback was pretty quick and the benefit was pretty clear, but be happy to show that.
Yeah, that, that is definitely something that we can do and, and it would be beneficial, you know, for my staff to have, you know, some, some guidance in being able to handle those situations, not only for the city of Ottawa, but any other community that might have a similar program, so. I'll, Paul's already taken off, but I've already had some, a preliminary conversation with him and we'll continue that and bring that back to you. The last thing I want to visit about if we're done with, with that is the Adopt a Bike program. This is something that Commissioner Stottemeyer has been a driving force behind for, for quite a long time. And if you recall, earlier this year, we worked with the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority Coordinator to submit a grant application to KDHE to fund, or at least partially fund a new trailer to store bicycles in. And we were notified just yesterday by our coordinator Shay that we were successful in that. And, and so, what we'll be doing is, once we acquire the, the trailer, we'll be working with Casey to get the branding on the, on the face of the trailer. We'll also do a little site work to, to prep for the new trailer and then we'll have some sort of celebration of some sort of ribbon cutting, that sort of thing, to acknowledge the grant award and then also really help promote the Adopt a Bike program. It's a, it's a wonderful program and the more that we can do to get the word out for, you know, kids to be able to utilize that service, the better it'll be. So, I think it's a great thing and I appreciate Don and Shay for really taking the lead on this and getting it done.
Appreciate the update.
For those of you that take the newspaper over the last week, you start seeing all the budget publications come out in that. As I'm sure you guys know, the readership of the newspaper has declined dramatically in recent years and so, in response to that, and just for transparency, I've developed a spreadsheet to keep track of when everybody's budget hearings are. And because we're not going to be sending out that notice for the new statute this year, I plan to publish that spreadsheet on our website that gives the hearing date for every taxing entity in the, in the county. I'm finalizing that, I have to reach out to all my neighboring counties to get all the school districts budget hearing dates because all of them, all the school districts will be ceding the revenue neutral rate just by the 20 mils that they levy in their general fund every year. So, I'm finalizing those school districts with my neighboring counties and then we'll be getting that posted to our website. I'm also working with Casey on that to find a way to create a link or something to social media, so just another avenue to get that information out. And that spreadsheet has a contact person for each entity, so if someone has a question on the budget, they know when they're reaching out to that entity, who they're supposed to be talking to about their budget. So, and it'll also give the budget hearing date and time and, and place for their location, for their meeting. So, if you guys have any questions about that, feel free to let me know.
Janet, to be clear, the budget that, and we've said this, I'm just saying it again for. again for the public who may be listening, the budget that we presented to the county commissioners is recommending a slightly over a three mil decrease. Is that correct?
Yes.
And assuming that there are no changes and we pass that budget, that'll be roughly five mil decrease.
Yes.
Over the last five years, correct?
Yes.
So our tax rate in Franklin County is going down.
Yes, ours is. We technically will be exceeding the revenue neutral rate because of the neighborhood revitalization program and some other things like that. Properties coming back on the tax rolls that have been exempt. So there are no exemptions anymore in the new tax law. So where we used to be able to kind of add some things back in, we don't have that ability anymore. So technically, we are showing a tax increase, but it should not really be reflected on our, on our taxpayers. It should be reflected on those tax, those entities that were previously tax exempt or something like that, so.
If these new houses in the middle of town that were built on a formerly vacant lot come back on the rolls, they show up as a tax increase.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So anyway, that will, should be getting up there this week so everyone can see. Some of the, a lot of those hearings are going to be taking place next week, so people should get right on that and looking at that list if they want to attend some of these, like townships. Any that are not exceeding the revenue neutral rate, their hearings are probably in the next week or two. But like I said, all the school districts are exceeding, and so theirs will all, all have to be in late August or early September. So those are all out there now.
All right. Question for Jen, is there any change in the requirements of legal notices like that being published? Because they're getting smaller and smaller, you need a big, big magnifying glass to even read what's, what's in the paper now, all those legal notices.
No, they're actually the, they're actually a standard publication that we send out that's in the budget workbooks that's provided by the state, and the Ottawa Herald has notified us that they have a standard size that they publish so that they have uniformity and that they don't make it smaller and stuff for some where it's cheaper for some and more expensive for others, so it's a standard size. So I understand what you're saying, Roy, and definitely anyone can contact my office, and if I don't have that budget to email to you to, to provide you a, a bigger copy that's easier to read, I know who has the budget at this time, and I can get a copy for you to, to look at.
Okay. The commissioner's portion, anything, Roy?
I don't think we said, I don't either. No?
Oh, yes. I got a couple of things out to follow up on the report on us getting a grant for the cargo trailer. We, since Shay has taken over as our coordinator, we didn't used to get any grants at all, very few, and she did it for us. We did, you get the grant for the cargo trailer here. We did get a grant for Lynn County Schools for three recycling trailers at $20,000. We got that grant. We received a, we helped Lake Merritt in Miami County get a grant for their recycling program over there. We also got Tyco that operates over there, kind of like COWP here, they got a recycling program. We also, I don't know the exact dollar amount on it, but we did get, helped them get a grant also, had been on the, the management deal. What my, our part on a lot of these grants is, she works with them, they apply for them, we put our stamp, seal that we approve, we think it's a good deal for our community. And there was 29 grants applied, 33, excuse me, 33 grants applied for across the state. Yeah, like, like five of them are right here in our area, and it sounds like all five of them got approved, is over $450,000 worth of grants put out there. And so we feel real fortunate that with our new, sometime we'll get her over here and come before the board and get the chance to meet her. But she has been a, a big boost to the way we're operating and the way things are moving, so I give two dollars to her there. And Paul's right here, we mentioned it the other day on, he alerted all of the cities about the, the funding to the state, the infrastructure fund, and I think Lane hired someone to help him with it. Of course, Wellsville has staff on there to deal with it up there, and I helped and ran to him as much as I could with advice and wanted him, we met last Sunday. The final day was the 25th, we got it submitted on the 25th, and I had Paul check with it and the state bid receiver, and it's approved to move forward. So Paul did a really good job with that. What he has, what he has done is not only notify people what's out there, but actually help them through the process if, if needed, you know? He doesn't jump out there and do it, but, but he makes himself available. And I know he made several calls on that deal with the, talked with the council down there, people and myself, and even called the state to make sure that it got in on time and everything. So I give two dollars. That's what we need after this, and all the work we're getting, so that's all I have.
Well, if anyone else has anything, jump in, or else we look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or adjourned? Thank you, everyone.